Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Stoughton School Committee Special School Committee Meeting on March 13th, 2023. This is being recorded on SMAC for future viewing. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. So tonight's meeting is a special meeting for superintendent candidate interview. We'd like to welcome Dr. Joe Baieda to our school committee room. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me.
No, and we appreciate that, you know, you took the call and were able to come, given the certain situation we're in with the turnover. So what we're going to do is just to explain to everybody what the process is going to be. So in the first five minutes of the interview process, we're going to ask Dr. Baieda to make an opening statement. Then school committee members will start down this end, and then we'll go down, and each of us will ask a question, and then Dr. Baieda will answer that question. And then we'll go down again, and then ask another question, and you'll answer the question. And then upon closing the interview, what will happen is we'll ask, or I'll ask for you to give a closing statement. You can five to 10 minutes, whatever you need, and then that will be it. So first, what I'm going to do is I'm going to ask for, to open the meeting.
I'll make a motion to open the March 13th meeting.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. All right. Great. Thank you. All right, so Dr. Baieda, I'll give it to you.
Thank you, Ms. Groppi, very much, and to the members of the committee and the audience that's here and watching at home. Good evening, and thank you for this great opportunity to be here with you. My intent tonight is to have a conversation with the school committee and give you the ability to know a little bit about me and who I am, what I stand for in terms of being an educational leader, and also learn about you at the same time. I have 31 years of experience in public education as a teacher, as a coach, as an advisor, as a union member, as a school committee member for two terms, and as an educational leader at the building level and at the district level. I'm a product of Stoughton Public Schools, proud product, class of 88, a citizen of Stoughton since 1974. When I arrived here, I was an immigrant from Flores Azores, Portugal. I sit in this room and building this evening thinking of only one thing, believe it or not. My education started in this very building. Back in the day, the Jones Elementary School was where all of the ELL students would go, and that's where I went to the Transitional Bilingual Education Program. Mr. Bryant was my principal, so walking into this building today has given me some emotions, as you can probably see. I then, on my fourth year, left and went to my home school, which was the Gibbons Elementary School, until sixth grade. We were classmates, and I had the best of teachers and experience in my time in Stoughton. Stoughton's a special place for me because I do believe black and orange always have, always will. My experience as a building-level administrator and as a district administrator make up 21 years of my 31 years in public education. Since 2009, I've been a superintendent. I've been serving the town of Norton since 2013. I'm with you this evening as a leader who is driven by full collaboration and transparency. My philosophy of every child, every day is driven by one thing: all children can learn. My role is to provide the children of Stoughton the resources and opportunities for lifelong learning. We do this by providing our educators the best professional development, the best practices, and the resources to meet these goals. From what I've seen so far in my review, you have much of this already taking place in Stoughton. I also have significant experience with the MSBA, having completed three MSBA projects, and I know you're currently under that process, and I look forward to being a member of that committee. My experience is budgeting, is that I'm as transparent as I can be in terms of not only collecting data from our staff, but from citizens, from our school committee, from our administrators, and yes, even my student advisory committee that I have for students in grades six to 12, they have input. Moreover, I also have experience with some of the municipal projects that are, have taken place in both towns that I lived in and the towns that I've worked for. I've worked on numerous statewide initiatives to support students and improving education. I've also just recently actually started a Legislative Representative Breakfast with the South Shore Superintendents Association, where we meet once a year for a big breakfast, usually right after the budget season starts, so that we can provide them input about what the needs of schools are. I sit on the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents Legislative Body, where I review as much as 400 pieces of legislation. This year, there was over 400 pieces of legislation that have come forward under education, and those will be reviewed, and then we support them or don't support them. I can assure you that the Superintendents Association has had a very strong attention to one thing: we do not need any more requirements that don't come with funding, and that's been a core of our belief, that we need to have that ability to either bring the funding with the initiative or don't bring the initiative forward. I am here tonight not as the smartest person in the room. However, I do believe I have certain professional and interpersonal skills that will support current needs of Stoughton Public Schools. Experience, leadership, clarity of purpose, accountability, and direction are all of the things that I believe I could bring to Stoughton. You already have a plan. My goal is to support the plan, or what I say, work the plan, enhance it, and hold myself, you, the school committee, the educators, and others accountable for moving Stoughton Public Schools forward. I look forward to this evening's dialogue, and that's it.
Thank you. All right, so now we're going to enter into the interview question portion, so I'm going to hand it down to you, Lindsay, to ask your question.
Thank you, Dr. Baieda. I, you mentioned in your remarks your philosophy that all children, all children can learn. I'd love if you could speak a little bit about how you use data to support that.
Sure.
Can you provide us with an example of how you use data to make decisions, plan, budget?
Yeah, great question. So I think one of the biggest things that I've brought to Norton is this accountability mindset that goes beyond an MCAS test, right? We have this assessment, it's important, we all know that it is, but the fact of the matter is there's a bunch of other things that have to take place prior to that one test that happens once a year for children or for our children who have to take it to graduate. So what we've started in both of the last two communities I've been with, with some success, is we've tried to find the right data portal where we can insert all of the data about individual students every day. So report card is on there, attendance is on there, discipline is on there, their MCAS scores are on there, and all of our four, five, six different local assessments that we have. So if I click on a student, I can see that student and where they are in comparison to not only their MCAS score, but attendance in school, discipline issues, grades. So our staff, that's what we try to do. We've had all of our adjustment counselors and our guidance counselors go through training on that. The idea is to catch the yellow flag before it becomes a red flag, right? Let's not wait until a student is not doing well. And there are many different platforms, you probably have a platform here that I just don't have information about right now, but the idea is to not allow for students to slip through the crack. Now, coming out of, out of the pandemic, we have seen a lot of things from, from our pre-K students all the way through our 12-plus students, from the social-emotional issues that we're seeing with students and how they feel about attending schools. Just the other day, I had a student that, you know, we had to physically bring into the building with the parents, just because of the highs and lows at some of the mental health that we're dealing with kids. So for me, it's about where are the students, where we're trying to go, what is the plan? You'll use, I use the word "work the plan" all the time, so I apologize. Work the plan. And one of the biggest things we've done lately is we really put together what's called our Integrated Multi-Tierce System of Support, where what we're doing is we're trying to look at students not before they're failing, but as they're having issues in school. So you've got the behavioral issues, and then you have the academic issues. And so with the academic issues, the idea is to bring together a team of teachers, educators, sometimes even the counselor and the nurse, depending on the student, and really talk about that student and what their needs are, and get that feedback to the general education teacher in the classroom in order to be able to provide further access for the student and hopefully move students forward and successfully. We've had some really good success with that. We're in the starting stages of that as a smaller district. We don't have some of the resources, but that's been our target. So our interventionists, our reading specialists, our numeracy specialists, they're all now working with those students, hopefully for eight to 12 weeks. I can tell you about stories about Stoughton where that's happened with family members that I know they've gotten the extra support, and the next thing you know, they're at reading level, for example, which is so important. We also try to take a look at where we're spending our money as part of the data question, if you, if you don't mind me expanding a little bit, and that is, we want to make sure that we are seeing outcomes from all of these resources. We, I'm so small as a district, right? We're about 2,400 students. We have a very fiscally conservative, if you will, town, which is great, but we really need to watch our spending and how we're using it. So outcomes become really, really important, and so sometimes that data leads us to make the changes that we, we need to make for kids.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Good evening. How are you?
Good. How are you?
Good. How much independence would you provide to your department heads and principals in selecting their staff? And what would be the role of the superintendent assessing the effectiveness?
So I think one of the most important things about education reform is that we've allowed for the hiring and, and, and all of that to take place at the building level, right? Each building has some different cultures, expectations even. We want consistency, of course. So what I do is, most of our hiring that takes place is with teams. We try, anytime we can do the hiring before the end of the school year, early summer is best, because trying to get people together in the summer can be difficult. And then I meet with every single employee that's hired in the district, every single employee. I want to know who I'm, who I'm hiring. It's very rare that I say no to a recommendation for hire, except when you can't answer the following question: why do you want to be a teacher? It's not about summers off, right? It's about working, working with kids to try to do better for them and having a, what I would call, an awesome career. But those are the questions I like to ask, you know? So if you hire a music teacher, and I'm the first person who's asked for you to sing or to play an instrument, that wasn't a good interview process as far as I'm concerned. You know, we should see the talent if we're hiring someone like that, or an artist, bring in your portfolio, or a teacher, bring in your best, your best example of a lesson. Those are the type of things we're working on now, is to really be consistent. We now have forms across the board in the hiring process, which we didn't have early on. I reorganized my entire HR office, which we really didn't have, and I still have to do a lot of it because it's part of being a smaller district, but I think that consistency has, it's really helped us to hire good quality candidates across the board. And then my involvement with, with staff is really about my principals and the directors that are supervising doing their job, which is to hold their folks accountable. So my job is to say, why are we late on evaluations? Because if you don't meet deadlines in evaluations and you do have a bad situation, you're going through some, some tough decisions if you're trying to, quote, eliminate a position, if you will, versus if you meet deadlines and you give feedback, you allow people to grow. I do not like terminating anybody because at the last minute, we don't like them. It's about growth. That's what we're doing for kids. We should be doing it for our educators, and I'll end, I'll end with this statement: try finding quality people today. We are up against it. We're all stealing from each other right now, right? The candidates are not coming. I was just at a local university, at a seminar, and the room 10 years ago, when I went there, because I go every year, I could have 75 to 100 educators in the room. You're lucky if there's 25 right now, and that includes elementary, where we're starting to see less and less applicant within the pool. And of course, administration, that's even a tougher one right now as well.
Thank you.
Sure.
Where to begin? Let me see, the questions, so many. I'll just go with the first. So communication is key. It's absolutely one of the biggest and most important things, I think, from a superintendent. So I'm going to ask you a question around this. How have you built lines of communication with the various district stakeholders, such as your leadership team, the faculty, staff, community leaders, business interests, and families?
So if anything that I have a fault for at times is that my door is too open. Just about anybody can see me whenever they want to see me. I'm not one of these people who doesn't want to see people, even if it's a difficult conversation. I think it's really important, and after almost 15 years of being a superintendent, I prefer to take on negative and positive in just a discussion than hearing it through the grapevine or anything else. I also think it's important, we have a weekly newsletter that comes out of my office. It's, it's usually a message. This week's message was, here's a copy of the budget line item, click here. And so any parent, anyone that gets our emails can, can see the communication. I think the most important part is a superintendent, though, although all that communication is important, it's really the people that are in the trenches every day. So we have a continuously working relationship with our union, as an example. I meet with all building reps once a month at 3:45 in the afternoon. We do it via Zoom because it's easier if people are already home because of the timed starts of the schools. And all the reps come to me with, hey, heat's been a problem in, at the X school, or it's not driven around arbitration issues or any grievances, it's driven around culture and climate within the building. We also have culture and climate committees in all of our buildings at the building level. Again, a way for teachers and, and all staff and the principal to get together and talk about how can we make it better for adults, because if you make it better for adults, you're also making it better for kids. The other part that I think is important, I meet with my leadership team every other Thursday for an hour and 15 minutes. It's a hard hour and 15 minutes, and the reason why it's a hard hour and 15 minutes is that because they have a lot on their plate. We combine those meetings to be both virtually and in person. We do that to be efficient. It's, it's just easier. If we're in a building, we host it at a building. I might get some coffee or something, just for people. Sometimes we do a working lunch. My folks like, like that 10 to 11:15 time period, and with the hard stop, it really doesn't impact a lot of the school's lunches, where the principals like to be back at the schools. And then if they're doing it virtually, it's easier because they're right there. The other part that I think is really important is the constant communication with our students. I am known to send our students from, from third grade, fourth grade on, they have email, district email. I am known to send a message of just expectations, celebration, any of that type of stuff. Tried to really do it a lot during, during the pandemic, just because, you know, I didn't get to see them as often. And I think, lastly, you folks, the school committee, or actually, I should say, families is the other one. I, I like to hold regular meetings with families about three to four times, in-person, hybrid, whatever we need to do to get people to come to a meeting to get facts, because if they get facts, then they can be our biggest supporters out in the public about what went on and didn't go on. Of course, there's certain things you can't speak about, but, but the fact of the matter is you get, you get that information, and you're seen as an open door, which is positive. Then the school committee, that would be the, the other part of this answer, I believe. I communicate anything that's within the open meeting law to all of my school committee members. All five of you get the same email. There's only one little carrot there that says, excuse the typos, because it's usually I'm flying to get you a message about something. It's not formal communication. So today, I, I sent out a communication about midday, about a situation we had in one of our schools. It wasn't anything huge, but I didn't want them to hear about it at Roach Brothers or at the coffee shop. It's really important. The other part of it is having the communication come from you. I tell, I tell my school committee for 14 years now, two different sets of school committees, and turnover all the time. If I'm not doing what you expect, I don't need it in a public meeting. Come to me and tell me I'm not doing my job, or you were disappointed in a decision, because I want to be able to make sure that the schools, the school department is moving forward. So it's not just me, it's not just you, it's our staff, it's our families, it's our kids. It's really, really important to me that we're clear about what we want to do. I make bad decisions every day, right? It's part of the job. I make more good decisions, I hope, every day, but I know that I make decisions that are under the law. You know, I just say to myself, why do we have to do this, or why do I have to do X, Y, Z? Those things happen all the time. I also like to celebrate, so I, I try to do social events with staff. If I'm invited, I always try to pop in, even if it's just a hello, to say hello, because it shows people that you're real, number one. And number two, this is a difficult job. Education has become a much more difficult job than it was just a few short years ago. I know my staff is feeling the burnout. I hear it all the time. So trying to find ways to communicate positive things is a good thing. I can tell you that coming here tonight has not gone over well, but it is, you know, in their, in their perspective, but it is what it is in terms of, of things that we choose to do.
Thank you.
Sure.
One of the departments I hear most about from families is special education, and you know, it's, it's a particular challenge because of the complexity of all the rules, the service needs, all the difference. Student and parent concerns, when you assess the effectiveness of the special education programs that you've, have been under your supervision, what are some of the criteria you use?
Well, I think it has to, the, the most important thing for me is, is best teaching practices in the classroom. So in my district, we, when I entered there in 2013, 14 school year, we, we had nine specialized classrooms. We now have, as of next year, 31 in, in pre-K through 12-plus. And I started that because I felt that we were sending too many students out of district, and I felt that we could do a better job educating students. So that's what we've done. So I think it starts with best practices, which means we have to hire good people. You have to hire the best people. I am known to target in special education, people who have experience, people who have done the work before, and it usually costs me more money because they're people with five, 10, 15 years of experience. This year, we hired three special educators that have more than 15 years of experience, but they were really going to take another challenge and being in programs and supports that they're good at. They came with great references, and, and they're working for us now, and they're doing quite well. So I think it's all about that part. I think the other part is, you still have to be compliant in special education especially, and also ELL and 504s, and I think compliance is important, so staying on top of the accountability of, of that. And then there are the difficult decisions, which are, meetings can be difficult to take place, so you have to have the right personalities in the room as well. We have five team chair people who basically have the authority to do whatever needs to be done in a team meeting to support a family and, at a program and/or inclusion or whatever the needs are. And my goal with them all the time is, use the data, use the information to help us make good decisions. There's no special deals, right? It's use the data, use the information, speak to the teachers, make sure we're listening to parents, that's a key one, and it's a hard one, because it can be contentious at times. And I think the last part that's, that's more important is, don't wait for the state to come in and do state reviews. Do your own reviews every couple of years. You can use the same format, and, and you might have to pay a few people extra bucks to do it in the summertime and all of that, but you can really look at your data, you can pinpoint your files, take, take 25 files during the summer and look at them for a file review. Are we doing what we say we're supposed to be doing in a file review? Those types of examples.
Thank you.
Hi, how you doing?
Very well, thank you.
Thanks for joining us tonight.
Thank you for having me.
My question is more so with regards to your skills. I know you spoke about some of the skills that you bring to Stoughton. I was wondering if we were to poll your current committee staff members, and they were asked to identify your greatest weakness, what would they say, and how do you know that they would respond this way?
Mike, I, I think my greatest weakness and, as a leader in any of the positions that I have is that I'm only willing to wait so long for us to move in the right direction. So I think that takes, of course, we have to have time, we want input, but at some point, we have to make a decision. And what I find in education at, at times is that it takes a long time to make decisions, and those decisions go by us, or they're too late. In general, my, my current school committee, the staff that, that I work with, my colleagues, I think that would be an area where they would say, you know, but they, I hate to say, my school committee likes that. They like that I'm willing to get people in a room and let's make a decision so that we can actually move forward. I also think, you know, I, I say this to people all the time, I just said it the other day, I learned English as a second language. My first language doesn't have commas, run-on sentences, good law. So I guess you could say there are certain things that I'm going to make sure that my colleague, if I'm hired, is going to be double-checking for me. I, I say it, do your thing, because I'm a thinker, and I'm always trying to, to do that. And sometimes my, I, I speak Portuguese fluently, still to this day, just spoke to my mom this afternoon and my dad. You know, of course, if I speak to my daughter in Portuguese, she says she doesn't understand me, but if my, her grandmother says it, she fully understands it. But I, I really do think that at times that can be a weakness, and I'm, I'm okay with that. You know, very rarely does it happen, but I would say that it's another weakness where my thinking and my reading and my writing are all over the place. I'm thinking in two languages. That happens a lot, especially as you get older. I don't know what's going on, but, so that would be another one, I think.
Thank you.
Sure.
All right. My next question is kind of a two-part question, so stay with me. But Stoughton is a diverse community with many different cultures. What can you do as the superintendent to help recruit the best and a more diverse faculty and staff to work here? And then also, what can you do as the superintendent to ensure that students representing these backgrounds receive all the supports that they need to be successful in school?
Yeah, that's a great question, right? It's a huge state initiative from DESI that's going on right now, from the governor's office, the prior governor, and this, the current governor, our commissioner of education. This is a, this is a, a big topic of discussion. So let me tell you what happens where I am. We're not as diverse, and we've recently have become more diverse over the last few years. And one of the things we've been trying to target is finding, of course, the best candidates, but we're really putting ourselves out there in all kinds of different publications that we wouldn't in the past. We actually belong to a local Massachusetts group that about 60 or 70 districts belong to. Actually, they have a job fair this coming, this coming Saturday that we, we will be attending. So diversity within the workforce, and, and I'll say this from the perspective of a child, sitting in the building where I learned English, having my L1, my first language, teacher who could speak to me in my L1 meant a whole bunch to me, because they knew my culture, they knew my language, they, they knew that type of stuff. At the same time, I also had only English-speaking teachers that did the same. They understood who I was and where I come from, and I think that's the most important part about kids, is that our students are wanting to create relationships with their teachers in a positive way, in a dynamic way, that they, they can get to know them, right? You, you just don't go to any teacher for your letter of references for college. You go to the ones that you've had a relationship with. You might even have gotten a C in the class, and yet that's still going to be the person that you're going to go to more often. So for me, diversity, which is all-inclusive as far as I'm concerned, is really about finding the folks who really understand children and can make a connection. We have a very difficult time with diverse candidates in Norton. It's a suburb. Attleboro and Taunton surround it. That's really our quote cities, and so we just don't get a lot of candidates of color, or our most recent has actually been an influx of Brazilian Portuguese families. So we're starting to try to figure that out in terms of our, our staff. In terms of the, the supports for students, again, I think you have to look at data. I break down our data in our district in every possible way that we can, so that we can take a look. And I can share some stories, some of them that you, you have probably read and heard about, but we try to look at the data from the perspective of where is the child and what's the need. Situations at home are important for us to know about, without over-the-top, of course. Of course, you also have the DYS, DCF situations, which those are complicated as well, but we try to learn each student as much as we can. One of our best exercises, I think every school system should do, is take, take a group of teachers, let's say in fourth grade, and take a roster of students and have the teacher check off, do you know this child? And you're going to figure out that some children you know better than others, and so the core then becomes, how do I know that child? That child has to have three or four adults in the building that they feel comfortable going to about just anything, whatever that may be, a reference for college, or on the other side, a support that they may need from a counselor or somebody who's in training. That's the other thing we do with that, too, is we really make sure that we try to find students, the people that they need and are willing to work with. So the data to your first question is, as driven here around socioeconomics, around diversity, I'm becoming more and more, in my current district, Chinese than we were before. I think that all communities are seeing this, just not big suburban communities or cities. And then it becomes, what kind of supports can we put in place? One of my diverse groups is growing ELL population, so this year, I'm adding a third teacher. That's how small we are, but we've gone from 13 kids to 65, 67 kids in three years, and it's a growing population. We can't just say that those kids don't need, deserve to be supported. So finding multilingual people is important. They're not necessarily out there. I've actually been working with, with a group of superintendents on trying to get some MTEL tests with, with teachers, because second language learners, it can be more difficult for them to, to pass it, even though there's a very good success rate. So what are the other ways that we can get those staff into our buildings? So now we're doing portfolio assessments with those candidates, which is a better way, because it's work that they've actually completed, they can show you that they did the job than just passing a test.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
That kind of goes well with my next question. If you could get rid of high-stakes testing for graduation requirements, MCAS, would you? Why, why not? This is a big one.
Yeah, so I'm very lucky as a superintendent who has been very outspoken about the MCAS for very reasons that we just spoke about. I don't believe that one test determines a child. I get the real world, you know, you become a nurse, you got to take a test, you become even a teacher to a certain extent or lawyer. I get that real-world stuff, but these are kids in their lives. And how many of them do we know that struggle with that assessment? I think the assessment has something that we need to also consider, but I think it's multiple. I'm currently working, my district is working with John Tanner out of Texas, he's an accountability guru. It's called the accountability mindset. We've been working with him, this is our second year. It's really about defining accountability as a school district. So we know the state's going to come in with MCAS, but there are 30 other things that we should be looking at. What do we do well and communicate it? Where are our kids? What are our reading scores show? What's the school culture like? What are our expectations of students? What do we want our students to learn? And those things to me are as important as a MCAS score. The other part of it that I think is really important is the dynamics of the curriculum that we're trying to teach. So for example, and I'm sure some of my educated colleagues in the room, we take a 10th grade high-stakes test. A high number of our students in 10th grade take what math class? Geometry. How many questions are on the test in geometry? Four, five, six, maybe? Maybe? On a good year, you might see six. Most years, it's actually less than that. We've actually looked at that. And yet our students are in this course for an entire year and then they're doing other areas of math, which is all important. It's all gross together, I get that, but I think we're looking at this test from the wrong way. I think we should have what other states have been doing for a long time. And that is to take a look at our students and putting a plan for success. No, lo and behold, what's happening right now? We're now looking at an EPP, an education proficiency plan, if you don't meet a certain score. So now you have to take certain classes and you got to, that stuff has been going on for the 15 years that I've been a superintendent and it's now a little bit more regulated. So students' classwork should be connected to how they're showing you that they're actually improving, not just the one test. It's interesting that during the pandemic, we were able to come up with scenarios of taking courses and saying, okay. It's also interesting that we do that with what one of the other groups is not MCAS, but the AP. All of a sudden, those of us that have been working with AP for, going back to my teaching days, I was an AP teacher, we've been asking for it to be electronic for decades. All of a sudden, we can take a 45, 60-minute test on the AP this past year, and by the way, not give the kids a break on their $100. That's a discussion for another day, I guess. But all of a sudden, we went online, just like that. And I knew, you know, they were working towards that and so on. But I think that we need to look at as children as having to have different ways to show us how to do their job. And in this case, it is to show us teaching and learning, what they're learning, what they need more help with in the classroom in order to be successful, especially as they move on to hopefully graduation and college and the workforce.
Thank you very much.
She's really against test, state testing.
Well, she's got currently four of my five are adamant about it, so.
Oh, okay.
Four of my five school committee members.
All right, so this question really goes around the climate that we've been in in the district recently and kind of goes around communication as well and how that's managed. Can you describe a situation where you had to provide unpleasant news or unpopular recommendations to a group of people? How did you plan for the recommendation and what did you do to convince individuals that this action was necessary?
Well, we might as well go to the hottest one. The pandemic probably put us into some of the more difficult decisions that the five of you and the superintendent had to make at that time. Everything from mask and no mask, to three feet versus six feet, to our preschoolers going to wear masks because it was a recommendation, not a requirement. And that was one of the bigger ones that we had in our community between the six of us, the five school committee members in my office. And that was our preschool was also in the same building as a K-2, K-3, excuse me, it's a pre-K-3 building. So there was a lot of discussion with the adults, specifically teachers, custodians, admin assistants, paraprofessionals, around the safety of all of that. And what we concluded from it was that we were going to take the recommendation that was being provided about those young students. So what we did is what the recommendation was. And we took heat from certain groups and then we had to think outside the box about how to do that in a safe way so that people who were bothered by it could feel. So, you know, everything from changing lunches and snack breaks and all that stuff, we went into. And then we had to really sit down with people and say, well, this is what we're doing, this is what we're doing, this is what, whatever it may be. And at the end of the day, it quieted down. The data also got better, then we had an uptick again. And so, you know, we had classrooms that we had to shut down at one point, all of that that I'm sure you folks had here as well because it hit every single district. So that would be an example of trying to take the plan, take the recommendations, the communication, gather the information. It was very vocal, at times unpleasant, to be quite honest. And it caused stress for all involved. You know, sometimes I wonder why five people unpaid want to be on a school committee to be yelled at. But, you know, I get it. My job to answer Ms. Groppi, your question is really this, I need to provide you the best information that I can, right? Under the law, within best practices, and then under policy and finances and all of that stuff, you folks have to take control. And I thought, I think the worst thing that happened during the pandemic for all of us involved in this, our educators, our parents, our families, was that we were constantly changing what we wanted, what we were asked to do. One week you're doing this, the next week you're doing that, then you're doing this testing, but you're not doing that testing. And it just brought the stress level. So for me, it was, that's when I communicated pretty regularly with parents. So we did virtual meetings, I can't tell you how many we were doing. We also did it with our staff. Now, it was voluntary and I did it at four o'clock after our last school gets out at 3:20, 3:35. But I just wanted them to hear from me, the facts. You know, this is what's happening, this is how the school committee is thinking about this, this is what I've informed them of. We also had a labor management committee that was one of the better ideas that we did. We had administrators and myself and union representatives, and then we left the executive board of the union for later and the school committee for later. So that way, we could have some honest dialogue before it became out in the public. And what happened with that is then it made the decisions by the school committee and the leadership on their side easier to come to conclusions. It was a lot of work, as you know. I know you folks were very heavily involved with that. I'm not sure any of us ever want to go back to it. But we tried to come from a perspective of not them, just us. Like, we're all having to come to work every day, we're all having to do things we really don't want to do, how do we get there? And it was hard, it was very hard. And I think that new superintendents who came into that in their first year across the state, that was, you know, it was difficult. It was difficult because you don't trust, you don't know people, trust is collaborative, who do you collaborate with? Those are all things we had established. So when we came to the table, we were having hard discussions, but those discussions were around trying to do the right thing. We just start from a different perspective, but at the end of the day, we always got to the same finish line.
Thank you.
As you know, we're in the feasibility studies phase for the Sunyouth Elementary School, and I wanted you to tell us a little bit more about your experience working with the MSBA with planning, renovating, or rebuilding new school building. I know you mentioned something about the Norton High School, some of the roof and window repairs, energy efficiency. Could you discuss more about that?
Sure. So in 2010, I became the principal, actually 2008, '09, I became the principal of Holbrook Junior Senior High School in Holbrook. 1952 building, rain in the building every day, bad shape. And we couldn't move it. So in 2009, '10, when I became the superintendent, I said, that's going to be the first thing I want to do. I left as the voters in Holbrook were voting for the first of its kind pre-K-12 building. It's a one-building district now. They took through three buildings and we made it into one. So it's a pre-K-5 with a 6 to 12. And it's got, it splits gyms and cafeteria space and upstairs, downstairs, library stuff. It's a really interesting project. That project comes from the state of Ohio. I actually went out to Ohio because we couldn't find a regional partner. We had met with Abington, we'd met with Avon, we've met with Randolph. There was all kinds of rumors and all kinds of stuff. We had some internal issues in terms of the town side not wanting to do it, they wanted us to regionalize, but we couldn't find a partner. So my work started there with the MSBA and giving them a plan that we got from another state, which is now actually considered a plan that other communities, small communities, especially Western Mass are looking at because it's all there, all in one place. Also better for sharing staff, you don't have to drive and all that. Plus, they were going to have another $50 million worth of MSBA projects for two elementary schools. Left there, entered phase three of a five-phase renovation addition. I have experience with renovations additions, I can't tell you I love it because we went six months with the, you know, bag lunches because we didn't have a cafeteria. I mean, that's what we went through. We went through tons upon tons of equipment in the building overnight and all that stuff. It's a beautiful project that came out great, offer you to come visit it if you'd like. It really, they did a nice job with it, state-of-the-art, very much just a different project than the Stoughton project was. And then I've done roofs, windows, and we just did a energy, $12 million energy project with solar panels at our schools. They're all ports, they're not on roofs. We stayed away from doing it on roofs just because of long-term, but now we have ports outside of all of our five buildings. And those are just going online as we speak. That project is being paid for by savings and also by solar grants. So we're getting about half a million dollars total every year back into that 12 million. And then after year 14, the town will clear for six more years, money.
Thank you.
Sure.
Hi.
Hello.
With critical race theory being a hot topic in this country right now, although the Massachusetts Association of Superintendents doesn't teach CRT, I'm interested in knowing your opinion on it and do you agree with the MASSS? Why, why not?
So, you know, CRT is one of those, I was a history teacher, right? So I've been around the discussion of race in students in the classroom, you know, my entire life, if you will. I think CRT is one of these things that we know, most of us know, comes from higher education. It does not come from K-12 education in terms of looking at institutional racism as part of a history class. It's not part of the foundations of our curriculum frameworks in Massachusetts. And remember that Massachusetts has been, not only did we take the national common core, but we kept part of it. So I've actually myself gone into the curriculum frameworks in Massachusetts and said, is there any CRT here? Yes, no, why? Why not? I think it's got so many critical issues around our society today and what's happening in the real world and what our kids are doing are really different. And I can share some stories with you about that if you'd like. So what I see about kids in my school district, and I'm sure it's probably here as well, is that kids are actually like each other. They like spending time with each other. They're not having a lot of discussions about being of color or not of color, of being Portuguese like I am, or being African-American, or Haitian, or Asian, let's say, as an example. And I don't think that the world today has done a very good job of modeling for our students how to have those difficult conversations. And I see this on a regular basis just by turning on cable TV, doesn't matter if you're from the left or the right. I mean, I watch Channel 4 just to check the weather because right now you get bombarded with so many different opinions. So my perspective of CRT is it is not part of the framework, it hasn't been part of the framework. And so I think that's why you see, you get the answer that you do from MASSS around that. And I don't know if MASCC has taken a stance, but I know our, the stance that we took was more around diversity, equity, and inclusion than it was around CRT.
Thank you.
Sure.
Sorry, I thought we were doing two. Yeah, so this ties back a little bit to my first question, but would love to hear a little bit about your experience working to close opportunity and achievement gaps for higher needs subgroups of students.
Yeah, so our biggest issue that our data has been spoken to so far is around our special education population and our high needs populations, which is probably going to be pretty consistent across the board. You'll see in a community like Stoughton, you probably also have African-American students, Hispanic students, Asian students, because you have higher populations. And so the data really is, it's better data because you have more students than I have, for example. I think achievement gaps are true. I think they happen. And I think the issue becomes how do you plan and how do you work the plan? In other words, what you're doing in K3 is probably different from 4, 5 around your achievement gaps. We just announced, to nobody's surprise in Norton, but something very aggressive, we have a 2026 goal that all students by grade three, 90%, well, I should say this, the goal is 90% of students by grade three will be at reading level. They will be reading at third grade. That's a pretty aggressive goal. We're using multiple sources of data, not just the MCAS test. We're using multiple datas, that's what we're working on right now as finalizing our goal. We just had our kickoff meeting last week with all of our principals. We'll be meeting with our staff, around staff that wants to work with us on creating this plan, bringing up to date our literacy plan, for example, is going to have to be huge. We're going through a literacy review right now for literature, a curriculum review on what we need for resources, what we don't have. I think those are all the things we have to line up for kids. When it comes to the achievement gap, I think the other thing that I think is really important is how do we extend learning for kids? Now, a lot of that takes money, so it depends on who you are. I really believe that for certain populations of students that are struggling, we need to find ways to extend the school day for them. And we have to do that with flexibility, right? Because we get everything from CCD after school to sports, we get that. But I also think that the virtual world that we came in during COVID can help with that. So one of the things we've done is we've actually offered virtual tutoring to kids in the evening as just another opportunity. Now, not every parent likes it, not every student likes it, but it's just another opportunity. We pay our staff. In some terms, we have good numbers, some terms, we have no one participating. We're actually now being asked to do it for homework. So not just based on your skill set, but also grounded in a parent. And by the way, it's a recommendation can be from the parent, the student, or a staff member, that, hey, it would be great if Johnny got some further tutoring in reading or mathematics that falling behind. And now our secondary students are asking for that to happen with tutors because it's so hard to find tutors, plus they're playing sports. You know, 65% of my students at my high school are playing an activity or sport every single day, which is great, brings some positive culture, but it does take these extended learning time ideas and makes them more difficult. I just saw, I think, a press release from you folks today about, I think you're doing something with STEM during April vacation. That's, again, another opportunity. Not every family's going to want to do that, but if you can get kids into the door and you have the staff to be able to do it, it's a win, it's a win-win because it ties the curriculum in, doesn't give them that downtime, although I also think kids should have some downtime as well. Sure.
Thank you.
How do you keep your committee informed and what is the strategy around issues that are your responsibility but where the school committee may have interest?
Yeah, I think it's important for the committee who live in the town and know the town and all that to have input. I think the question really, not to ask a question, to a question, but my question is always provide them the input and then I'll say, I hear what you're saying, but we're going in this direction because this makes more sense. I've had a really good strike of balance with my committee on those types of issues. School committee members don't like surprises, neither do superintendents, right? So for me, making a decision revolves around the first part, which is the communication. I'll give you a little example. We have an athletic complex that we just opened up, $6.2 million project. We just opened it up. Certain populations of students after school believe that that's their playtime, right? So now it's trashed, broken this, broken that, you know, and it's a brand-new field. But we also made a commitment to the community that we wanted it to be a community field. We want kids to use it, right, and to be there. So I had to send something out to the school committee today, just simply saying to them, listen, we're having some issues on the fields right now and it's only after school, it's not on the weekends. So it's on the way home, basically. And so I said, listen, I know we've made a commitment to community, but we need to stop this for a couple of days and figure out who's really causing the problems versus who's just being a kid. And so I know I'll get some, potentially get some pushback, you know, does it, when does it happen? How do we know? We have videos all over the place, but I don't have a body there. I don't know if we are going to have to go that route at some point. Once a lot of the sports open up this spring, it's a baseball, it's a multipurpose field and all of that, I think we'll see that slow down a little bit, but we need to balance that. So I had to get input from the committee, but I also had to tell them, listen, for the next few days, I know this is how you feel, but for the next few days, we got to shut it down right after school, nobody there until we find out if we can make some announcements and communications with the families as well as the students while in school. So tomorrow, I plan to go to one of our schools where this is, we know that these are the kids, and I'm just going to get in the intercom and say, hey, guys, it's me, it's time to stop, you know, destroying things because we will, we do have cameras there. I want to make sure you know that, so if you do make a mistake and I catch you on camera, we're going to have to have a difficult discussion with the family about this. Just one example.
Thank you.
Okay, I just made up a different question while we were here, figured why not ask? So we're effective July 1st, we'll be looking for, we'll be adding a new middle school principal, so we'll be doing a search for that. Special education director, we're doing a search for that, and that will be new effective search for that. And that will be new effective July 1. Our business manager has resigned, and we'll be looking for a new business manager. So that will be as effective, hopefully, July 2nd, June 2, because that ends quicker than we thought. And then a superintendent will be replacing. Katie Pino Inoki and myself, the veteran school committee members, will be gone in a month. Our terms are up, and we're not running for reelection. And the school committee member with the longest term is two years who's on here. So as you can understand, I have a lot of concern for the district, for the staff, for the teachers, the students, the families. What would you, if you were appointed the superintendent in the first year of your superintendency, do to help morale amongst the staff, the students, families, opening the door for them? Obviously, we're not looking, you know, for someone to come in and exchange everything, but there's a lot that, you know, this will you'll be the you would be the fourth superintendent in five years. And it's not an easy job for obvious reasons, we can tell. So what would you do in that first year to help build the district?
So any opportunity I have I've had in the past, I really like to listen and to learn about the expectations, the culture, the dynamics of personalities, right? We we're in a workforce that has administrators and teachers and custodians and all the different groups. Everybody sees things differently. So I think listening is going to be one of the first things that I do. I reside in the town, so I get some information, as you know, but I I'm not involved in in the day to day running of the district. I think the second part is I have to work with potentially a brand new school committee, if you will, or newer school committee. So I'm going to have to take some advice from you folks. And also, I think, because I have sat on that side of the aisle way a time ago, a long time ago, what I learned is that that we have to really communicate clearly expectations amongst each other, not only the five of you to me, but within each other as well. Because you're five different people, right? I always say it's five different islands with the same goal. So the way that I interact with one of you is might be different than the other because we're human. That's what happens. I I'm excited about new people coming in, right? Because now I'm not alone. It's we're all coming in from different perspectives. So we've all probably been successful where we've been, even if you, let's just say, you took a subordinate and they become the principal. They're going to have a different eye on things versus a person from the outside. So I think that's a good thing. You do leave some good history with the assistant superintendent, who's been here for a while, and other folks in in the central office that have been here for a long period of time. I do think that those two critical areas of special education and finance are hugely important, hugely important. So but it's also exciting opportunity to be able to mold, mentor, support. Hopefully, some folks have some experience as well, but they don't have the Stoughton experience. So I think that would be important. And then I think lastly is anytime somebody leaves school committee, employee, you lose history, right? You lose, you know, and I can I can tell you stories that Pat Y, Pat Yanikowski, who was behind me when we were on the school committee together, the things that we had to fight for that were that were, you know, at times we thought were pretty ridiculous, but we did a pretty good job of of making sure we could do it. And so I think it's really, really important. And the last part is you got to do the two piece collaboration and trust. If I say to you one thing and I don't do it, I either have to get to you, and by you, I mean a staff member, that means the school, I got to get to you before it's, you know, becomes quote, public, or, you know, if it's out there. It's so important. I hold a central office meeting every Monday at nine o'clock. It's half an hour. It's an opportunity to what's going on for the week? Okay, we got school committee Tuesday? Are we ready for school committee? What are we missing for school committee? Anything? Okay, because that's a check off box for me as the superintendent. And then the other part that I I think is important is getting them to do certain things. And we all have 50 things beyond our job description, right? Item number 27, anything else appointed by the school committee. And administrators have that too from the superintendent. I think it's really important to to have the dynamic of getting certain folks to know certain areas. One of the people that sits in my leadership team that always brings something interesting to the table is my director of facilities in operations. You know, he just see he sees the world from a dad and from working in a school years ago. And so we have him on our team because he does bring that perspective to the table. That's just a different understanding for the team to have as we're making critical decisions as as a district. So to me, it's the collaboration and then the trust. You gotta, those are, those are, if I'm asking you for input, it's like if it's in the old days, you ask people for something and they give it to you, and then you just throw it away. At some point, people just don't do it for you. You got to, there's got to be a collaborative trust factor that takes place and be straightforward. I have difficult conversations all the time. I love difficult conversations. I have no problems with them. I'm pretty good at them. I don't yell and scream. I'm just not there. I'm always here. And sometimes people are worried about making mistakes, which I think is one of the biggest problems in in leadership. You can't be worried about making mistakes. If you went at it from the perspective of wanting to do good things for children, you're already doing the right thing. You might have just looked at it from a different perspective that you may maybe you should have opened up your eyes a little bit more or received information from others that you didn't.
Just one comment. You had made a comment about being on the side of the table. We know on your resume, you were the young, you're you're touted as the youngest school committee, Stoughton School Committee member ever. But Lindsay said you just beat her by a year, and she's really upset by that. She she called that on in your resume today.
It was it was funny at the time. It was really interesting years in those days because she definitely shares stories. But as you know, being a school committee member, there's always a story to tell. There's always something that that takes place. But it was a it was an interesting time in my life. I wasn't married. I didn't have children, and I'm a school committee member. So, you know, what's he up to? What's why? Why is he trying to be on the school committee? And I was an educator. I actually worked in Sharon when I got on the school committee. I was a history teacher and psychology teacher at Sharon High School. So interesting, I was negotiating here and negotiating there for two different perspectives at one point. Yeah.
Thank you.
I was curious if you wanted to, if you could talk about what do you think are some of students underrated or undervalued strengths and programs that you would like to highlight or develop during your time here?
Yeah, I'm I was I was telling Mr. Ford on the way in, in trying to do a little bit of my homework, and not everything's on the webpage and all of that stuff, which is fine. But one of the things you folks have really done well in is you've established, you as a committee have supported it, prior committees have supported, I believe, as well. You really have taken the recommendations of the structure of success for a district. I don't have 15% of some of the structures that you have in place. And structures and systems are what lead to success. They give teachers the opportunity to do their magic with kids so we can make sure that they have the supports that are needed, and then therefore the children have the support. So what you've done with your leadership is provided the opportunity for the superintendent, I think, to do two really clear things. You know, carry out that vision and find the resources for the district. And then everybody's doing the teaching and learning, or they're doing the HR, or they're doing the business, or they're doing the principalship, or they're curriculum coordinator underneath. Those are things that congratulations to the town of Stoughton and Stoughton Public Schools for doing it, because that is going to be your strength long term when things get tough. Because they always get tough, right? We always have these cyclical 10 years of great 10 years, lousy 10 years, budgets and everything else. And I think you've established that. And I think one of the core things, and again, not having a lot of your data, is your class sizes, really targeting, trying to make sure that you have good class sizes. I think that makes sense. The most difficult decision that I make every year that I've had to do it is eliminate a position. It's the most difficult thing that I do because of money, because of the lack of money and and resources. And so for me, I congratulate you on on what you've done, based on what I've seen so far.
Thank you.
Hi, to piggyback off of their questions, I guess, in addition to the challenges that you're going to face with regards to if you are appointed building the district, I'm interested in knowing what's your, what do you see as important issues facing specifically Stoughton right now? And what's going to be your approach in tackling that issue?
So, you know, one of the things I haven't been able to get into a lot is is what does our data show about student performance? I think those are one of the areas that I really need to, I need to be here to really look at it. I just don't want to look at one set of data. So that would be an ask, something I would really take a look at is really find out from those that are doing the teaching and the learning from bottom all the way up, what are our successes? Everybody has an opinion about a reading series or curriculum and all of that stuff. But what does the data show us about kids? So that's going to be a counter for me on day one. I think asking the people that I will be working with, what do you think the strengths of this community are? I need to learn what those strengths are. I'm a firm believer that A, always improve your your strengths, get them even better, because that just picks up where you have some areas of maybe need. I saw at the last town meeting that you had with some extra funding or funding, I shouldn't say extra funding, that came in through Chapter 7 that you've targeted. What some people would say little things, but as somebody who's done it big things, like middle school athletics and activities, and having more kids have more to do after school hours, huge. It's going to impact kids not leaving Stoughton Public Schools. I can tell you that story from Norton. We have a full on middle school athletic and activity program. We play in a league. We have basketball, boys and girls. We have baseball, softball, hockey, football. Football's with the town, but it's still connected to us. We give them the fields and all that. So and then we have activities. And we're so small, but, you know, if somebody wants to take the cello, let's find the person, let's find the teacher, give them a stipend, teach them the cello. I don't think we have a cello for the record, but maybe we do. So I think that's hugely important, recognizing that. Maintaining not having fees for a community like Stoughton is bigger than you think. It's bigger than you think, because I have fees. And so I am constantly, I'm very lucky. I have a couple of donors that I can count on and say, I cannot not have this kid play football this year. I need $250. Let's go. Let's find, let's let's get it. But we do have fees for transportation activities and athletics. And I think I think the other part would be, what's our staff saying? And that's always a tricky one, because when you do have the structures, that's a good thing. But I'm not going through 30 people to try to figure out how things are going in a building. I want to talk to my principal. I want to talk to staff. I call them, I do learning walks where I'm really learning. I'm looking at teaching and learning. We have a data chart, six to six to three to six administrators. We split up. We only do it for an hour and a half, so it doesn't kill the day. We just go in 10 minutes and we collect data, not on any individual, no, no teacher in names or any of that. We just say, what were the kids doing? What were the children doing in that class when you went in for those 10 minutes? And we collect that data, and then we're actually about to release that data to staff from the first half of the year. And then I have what I call my my kissing babies and shaking hands. I like to go up to staff, and I know that their mom is not well, and recognize them as a person, you know, that they're coming to work every day, and they get that added stress of a sick child, a sick parent. I don't know about you folks, but I have a growing number of elderly parents of my staff. So they're they're, you know, you can see some of the pressures of moms and dads getting into their 80s and 90s and having to take care of them. So those are the moments where I don't have an agenda. I am not there for anything else except to learn about you, to learn what's taking place. I pop into the cafeteria and say, you know, hi, Hawaii, meet people. I do it with our bus drivers outside. They actually belong to a third party. They're not mine. I have a small group that are mine, or that work for us. And then really try to my custodial staff, I mean, the guy who comes into my place, he's a Packers fan. And so we're trying to figure out where where that quarterback's going. And every day he comes in, I'm like, what's the story? I mean, you have to create those positive relationships. And then my most important part about finding is probably within the first two months of school, I will start a student advisory committee to the superintendent. I've done it every place I've done. I give them lunch, believe it or not. I came to the town spa and grabbed lunch once and got it back to a 12:30 meeting, because they all know the spa, even though they're in another community. And and we just talk about what's going on. My students are very much pushing the elimination of traditional midyear and final exams. They would like to see more non traditional exams. So now we, our teachers have been really good about it. They're they're taking either their midyear or their final, and they're making one traditional, one less traditional, such as a portfolio, such as a PowerPoint showing the assignment, a lab, a production, another way for students to show their performance or that their knowledge that they gained during that second half or first half of the year. Those are the type of things I I want to learn about the community if I'm successful.
So I'm going to take a pause for a second. Is that okay? There was a lot of questions. We actually did not think we were going to get through three each. So that was a large number of questions. And being it over a little over an hour, what I'm going to do is I'm going to ask if you would like to take five or 10 minutes to kind of give us an opus of why you want to come to Stoughton, or why, you know, we're the best district.
So, you know, first of all, thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening and provide you some, hopefully, some examples and some thoughts about who I am and my belief system and what I think I would bring to Stoughton. I started earlier by saying I'm not the smartest person in the room, and I really do believe that. I hire very well. I try to find the right people to to run our system. And I also believe in the concept of collaboration within leadership. I am not a top down leader. I'm very much involved and have my hands on the pulse. But if I'm paying somebody to do their job, my job is to make is to hold them accountable for that. I want them to make decisions. I want them to have input from from different parties, if you will, because I think it's important to let them grow. I'm also probably somewhat taken back around that I live in town, and I'm seeing a school system that I think needs a strong leader, somebody who's done the job before, somebody who knows some of the politics, not all of it, because I haven't been involved, someone who can bring some ideas to the table around some of the things that may be a priority around your budget. I know that you're having discussions around topics such as SROs and crossing guards, and you had a healthcare situation that you're undertaking. Those are all critical things that I think we can, we can bring different ideas to the table, or just bring the ideas that maybe make it better for Stoughton. And we should do it this way, not that way, as as one, one, one thought. I'm hands on. I am at as many sporting events, activities, and and stuff that I can go to, because it it's my way to stay connected. My my proudest time is when I walk into an elementary classroom and everybody knows Dr. Biotta. That's when I know I'm doing the right thing, because that means that the kids know who I am. And that means if if the students, the children know who I am, then they know that we're there to do good things for them, right? And to help them, to help them out. And that's a lot of my, you know, my kissing babies, shaking hands moments, is to really go into those classrooms and get down on, I go through suits like you wouldn't believe, because I don't mind getting myself dirty. I also think in in being honest is part of collaboration. I can't have any of you finding out that I have X, Y, Z. I'm sitting in this seat as superintendent. I got to give you the facts and the information. There are certain areas that you have total control of as as a school committee, and there are areas that I have control over, but I want input. And I think that's really, really important. Much of what you heard tonight, I think, are things that that anyone could say. But I think entering 15 years of doing this, and I would say that I've been a pretty successful superintendent, because I've had school committees allow for me to do my job, and I've been able to give the school committee everything that they need to do their job. So that when we're talking facts about what's taking place, it's it's facts. It's not just an opinion of one member. It's the facts about the committee. The committee needs to act as a whole. So if you have a three to two vote, and you you lost the vote, the committee is acting on behalf of the majority, and you have to move forward with that and get by get by it. I think that the structures that you have in place, that I mentioned earlier as a positive about the district, is something that really excites me about this opportunity, if I'm successful. And that's because I think if you have those structures, then a leader can really lead and take you to another another level, because it allows for those people to do their job. And I got to do the job that I'm I'm supposed to be doing as superintendent. I'm not the curriculum writer, right? I'm not the finance person. I know them, but I'm not, I'm not there. The the thing I like to do the most is pre-COVID, and then since COVID, I've done it once. I take a half a day and I put on my really, you know, my khakis. And I spent a half a day in preschool, because preschool is an area that is, you know, I was a secondary guy, and I've been a principal, but preschool is like a dynamic area. It's a dynamic area, not only because of the students' needs and supports, but because it is a lot of hands on education that's taking place in a preschool. And I've never been more tired in my entire life, by the way, just the ups and downs all over the place. And I think that relationships matter. I want to get to know families. I want to get, I want to get to know our staff. I know that if you know I go to Stop and Shop, you're going to want to stop me in the in the in the aisle. I'm ready for that. I can tell you, here's my card. Call me on the office Monday. We'll talk about it. Get you on the agenda with me or whatever the case may be. I think I'm ready. I think I'm ready for that. I spent a lot of time in Stoughton. For some of you know, I'm very involved with the Portuguese-American community. I was the president of Our Lady of Fathom at Feast in Stoughton and vice president for four years. Now I'm just a volunteer. I volunteer at St. John's Club here in town with their fundraisers, some of them very culturally-based, some of them just an opportunity to raise money for people in need, we do all of that as well. And then I also try to spend as much time with my wife and my daughter, who's a junior, and really being a dad and participating in the things that she wants to participate. She's a musician, so we're going all over the place, dealing with what school she wants to go to and all of that stuff as a junior, and so that's important to me. And this could be a significant tie period for both the school system with a new superintendent with some experience to provide you an opportunity to create, model your next leader, so that you don't have to continuously leave Stoughton to find your next superintendent when the time comes that I'm not here. Because I think you have a lot of quality people in town who work for you, some reside in town, some don't, but those leaders could be here, and I think I could help to support whatever that position is. Recently, you moved a middle school principal to central office, that's a good thing in terms of, it probably hurts at the middle school, but you're looking at district-wide what to do. Those are good things that you want to do. You want your staff to know that they can be promoted. That's a really important balance of a combination of the outside with people internally, as you have turnover, people retire, or whatever the case may be. I look forward to the next steps and the opportunity, and whatever happens, we understand that you folks have a difficult decision to make when you decide to make it, and I will be ready to take a phone call, whatever way you decide to go.
Thank you for that, and thank you for taking the call. I know it was very untraditional to get that call. I had asked the school committee, Dr. Rab had provided his intent to resign on February 14th, and we waited a couple, it was hard, because we obviously know the school year will be ending, and then here we are again, and we'd be looking behind the eight-wall, I guess you'd say, for a superintendent, because the search is pretty much a year long when you're looking for someone long-term. So, you know, it was very untraditional for me to ask, and you had popped in my head, because I know that our current superintendent, you had been helping a little bit to try to help keep things moving in the district as much as we could. So, you know, and I appreciated that you were doing, you know, giving him advice and trying to help kind of get us going, so knowing that that was on the top of my head when, on this, I can't, I was surprised that you actually said you would show up here, because I wasn't, 15 years in one district, and then telling them that you're interviewing somewhere else, I can imagine the impact that it's having on you in your town of Norton. So I do want to thank you for coming here and putting your neck out for the town of Stoughton, and knowing that you're a resident of the town as well. I'm sure you've gotten a lot of stops at Stop &amp; Shop already, too, asking you questions, so I just wanted to kind of thank you, because I, you were not expecting, I didn't even think you'd say sure, so, so, you know, I guess you ask and see what happens, and I know that you have a little bit of experience with Stoughton Public Schools, just by some of the help that you've been providing to the existing superintendent, so appreciate it. Is there anything anyone has that they'd like to say before we close things off? I'll go down to you, Lindsay.
Just want to say thank you very much for coming, and it was really wonderful to hear about your background and your responses to our questions, so just thank you.
I suppose I thank you very much, too, and I am a little hurt that when I asked you a long time ago, the answer was no. But I'm going to get over it, and thank you for coming tonight, I appreciate it.
I was too afraid to ask anybody, I had to get a vote. I don't, I didn't.
I want to thank you as well, and, you know, for all your thoughtful answers to the questions and for helping us, you know, think about our long-term plans as well. This has been really helpful in long terms, you know, listening to you, but also for those of us who are new to the school committee, thinking about what we want in a leader has been very helpful, and you've provided a lot of helpful information just by being here tonight.
I concur with everybody, thank you for coming here. Don't really have anything else to add. Thank you.
Fabian, you crack me up, it's so funny. Yes, so we'd like to thank everybody who attended this evening and taking time out of your schedules to come and to listen and to try to be educated on the candidate that we've brought forward to speak to this evening. Please feel free to stick around if you want to come say hi to any of us, or even to Dr. Baeda. Before you leave, we'll be here for a little bit. So that will conclude the interview. Thank you very much, Dr. Baeda. I'm just going to ask for a motion to close the meeting.
I'd like a motion to close the school committee.
Great, thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, great, thank you, everyone. We are scheduled for our regular school committee meeting tomorrow evening, weather permitting. Have a great evening, bye.